Okay, good evening. Welcome to the Township of Howell Planning Board Meeting for Thursday, October 16th, 2025. Eileen, opening statement, please.
I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open, adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 3rd, 2025, a copy of said notice was emailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger. Second, on January 3rd, 2025, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on January 3rd, 2025, said notice was posted in the office of the Planning Board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and for your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits at the front and rear of the meeting rooms. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Beto.
Here.
Mr. Greenfield is excused tonight. Mr. Carbonic.
Here.
Mr. McNicholas.
Here.
Mr. Mercer.
Here.
Mr. Tannenhaus is absent tonight. Councilman Nadel.
Here.
Mayor Leggio.
Here.
Mr. Friedman.
Here.
Mr. Wetco.
Here.
And Chairman Husser.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, would everybody rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, and afterwards a moment of silence for our men and women who have served both here and abroad.
(inaudible)
Okay, thank you. Eileen, any correspondence this evening?
I have no correspondence tonight.
Okay, on to resolutions. We have quite, quite a lot. First one is Resolution Review of Proposed Ordinance for O-25-41. Eligible voters: Mr. Beto, Mr. Carbonic, Mr. McNicholas, Mr. Mercer, Councilman Nadel, Mr. Friedman, Mr. Wetco, and myself. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Mercer, do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you.
Mr. Beto.
Yes.
Mr. Carbonic.
Yes.
Mr. McNicholas.
Yes.
Mr. Mercer.
Yes.
Councilman Nadel.
Yeah.
Mr. Friedman.
Yes.
Mr. Wetco.
Yes.
And Chairman Husser.
Yes. Thank you. Next is case number SP-1138, JNS Flex Center LLC, Resolution Granting Submission Waivers. Eligible voters: Mr. Beto, Mr. Mercer, Mayor Leggio, Mr. Friedman, and myself. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Beto? Mayor Leggio, thank you.
Mr. Beto.
Yes.
Mr. Mercer.
Yes.
Mayor Leggio. Mr. Friedman.
Yes.
And Chairman Husser.
Yes.
Approved.
Next is case number SD-3018, Carmine Caruso, Resolution Granting Minor Subdivision Approval. Eligible voters: Mr. Beto, Mr. Mercer, Mayor Leggio, Mr. Friedman, and myself. Do I have a motion? Mayor Leggio, second. Mr. Mercer.
Mr. Beto.
Yes.
Mr. Mercer.
Yes.
Mayor Leggio. Mr. Friedman.
Yes.
And Chairman Husser.
Yes.
Approved.
Case number SD-3013, Besadar LLC, Resolution Granting Preliminary Major Subdivision Approval. Eligible voters: Mr. Mercer, Mayor Leggio, Mr. McNicholas, Mr. Friedman, and myself. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Mercer?
You...
Mayor Leggio, for the second. Thank you.
Mr. Mercer.
Yes.
Mr. McNicholas.
Yes.
Mayor Leggio. Mr. Friedman.
Yes.
And Chairman Husser.
Yes.
Approved.
Case number SP-1143, Richard Chibl, Resolution Granting Submission Waivers. Eligible voters: Mr. Beto, Mr. Carbonic, Mr. McNicholas, Mr. Mercer, Councilman Nadel, Mr. Friedman, Mr. Wetco, and myself. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Carbonic, do I have a second?
Second.
Councilman Nadel?
Mr. Beto.
Yes.
Mr. Carbonic.
Yes.
Mr. McNicholas.
Yes.
Mr. Mercer.
Yes.
Councilman Nadel.
Yes.
Mr. Friedman.
Yes.
Mr. Wetco.
Yes.
And Chairman Husser.
Yes.
Approved.
Okay, next is case number SD-3024, 1120 Farmingdale Road LLC, Resolution Granting Submission Waivers. Eligible voters: Mr. Beto, Mr. Carbonic, Mr. McNicholas, Mr. Mercer, Councilman Nadel, Mr. Friedman, Mr. Wetco, and myself. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Carbonic, do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, Mr. Mercer.
Mr. Beto.
Yes.
Mr. Carbonic.
Yes.
Mr. McNicholas.
Yes.
Mr. Mercer.
Yes.
Councilman Nadel.
Yes.
Mr. Friedman.
Yes.
Mr. Wetco.
Yes.
And Chairman Husser.
Yes.
Approved.
And the last for this evening, case number SP-1144, Tulsi Restaurant LLC, Resolution Granting Submission Waivers. Eligible voters: Mr. Beto, Mr. Carbonic, Mr. McNicholas, Mr. Mercer, Councilman Nadel, Mr. Friedman, Mr. Wetco, and myself. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Carbonic, do I have a second?
Second.
Councilman Nadel?
Mr. Beto.
Yes.
Mr. Carbonic.
Yes.
Mr. McNicholas.
Yes.
Mr. Mercer.
Yes.
Councilman Nadel.
Yes.
Mr. Friedman.
Yes.
Mr. Wetco.
Yes.
And Chairman Husser.
Yes.
Approved. I think we just forgot the minutes in the beginning.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, that's my fault. I apologize. Uh, approval of minutes for the regular meeting of June 19th, 2025. Eligible voters: Mr. Beto, Mr. Mercer, Councilman Nadel, Mr. Friedman, and myself. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Beto, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Mercer?
Mr. Beto.
Yes.
Mr. Mercer.
Yes.
Councilman Nadel.
Yes.
Mr. Friedman.
Yes.
And Chairman Husser.
Yes.
Approved.
And the regular meeting of August 7th, 2025. Eligible voters: Mr. Beto, Mr. Mercer, Mayor Leggio, Mr. McNicholas, Mr. Friedman, and myself. Do I have a motion? Mayor Leggio, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Beto?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Beto.
Yes.
Mr. McNicholas.
Yes.
Mr. Mercer.
Yes.
Mayor Leggio. Mr. Friedman.
Yes.
And Chairman Husser.
Yes.
Approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, on to submission waivers this evening. The first being case number SD-3026, Edward and Dorothy Morgan. Okay. I didn't see you all the way back there. Good evening.
Good evening. John Jackson for the Morgans.
I do. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we have a September 11th, 2025 review letter. The submission waivers are specifically outlined on page four, item three. I had the opportunity to provide some feedback to the applicant. There's a couple items I recommend be provided to be deemed complete, and then a couple items on a subsequent submission, and then the balance I take no exception to. So I'm going to go through those. The items I recommend be provided at this time are the natural resource inventory checklist item number 14, checklist item number 60, all overland and underground drainage conveyances within 2,000 feet, and checklist item number 85, the Woodlands Management Plan. I also recommend that checklist item 11, submission to freehold soils, checklist item number 27, key map showing a 2,000-foot radius, checklist item number 29, the state planning area checklist which is the same as 42, checklist item number 52, names of all property owners and use designation of all lots. I recommend that be provided on a subsequent submission prior to the board application being heard by this board, and the balance of the items I take no exception to waiving for the purposes of deeming complete.
John, acceptable?
Yes, I had spoke to Ms. Newman about the freehold soils, that we could do that as we go through the plan review process.
That's what I said on the subsequent submission.
Thank you. I misunderstood that. I have no... Thank you.
Okay. Any questions from members? Nope. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
I'll entertain a motion.
Are you making a motion?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Carbonic, roll call, please.
Mr. Beto.
Yes.
Mr. Carbonic.
Yes.
Mr. McNicholas.
Yes.
Mr. Mercer.
Yes.
Mr. Tan... uh, Councilman Nadel.
Yes.
Mayor Leggio.
Actually, I'm going to have to abstain from this application. I believe this is my, one of my friend's parents. His daughter, I believe, was on Lucy Street.
Yes.
Is she here?
Yes.
There's a couple of them. Yeah, but I know, I know the family, so I respect her.
Thank you.
Mr. Friedman.
Yes.
Mr. Wetco.
Yes.
And Chairman Husser.
Yes.
Approved.
Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thanks, John. Have a good night. Okay, the next is case number SD-3025, Judah Berkowitz. Good evening.
Donna Bullock, for, for the applicant. I'm from Oregon Engineering. I prepared the minor subdivision plan.
Good evening, Donna.
I swear affirm the testimony you're about to present to the board concerning this application shall be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I do. Uh, Mr. Chairman, similarly, we have a September 11th, 2025 review letter. Submission waivers are specifically outlined in item three, and because this is a minor subdivision with no improvements proposed at this time, I take no exception to the granting of these waivers for the purposes of deeming complete.
Okay. Gentlemen, any questions? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Mr. Beto, do I have a second? Mayor Leggio?
Mr. Beto.
Yes.
Mr. Carbonic.
Yes.
Mr. McNicholas.
Yes.
Mr. Mercer.
Yes.
Councilman Nadel.
Yes.
Mayor Leggio.
Yes.
Mr. Friedman.
Yes.
Mr. Wetco.
Yes.
And Chairman Husser.
Yes.
Approved.
Thank you.
Thanks, Donna. Have a good night. Okay, the last submission waiver this evening is case number SD-3027, RCH Newton's Corner Road LLC.
Good evening. Keep going. You're Donald Haller and Cecil for the applicant.
I do. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we have a September 25th, 2025 review letter. Similarly, submission waivers are outlined in item three. We actually had the opportunity to meet with the professionals, and I had requested that item 60 be provided that has since been submitted and reviewed by my office. As it relates to the balance of the items, there's some items that I think should be provided on a subsequent submission, specifically 39, North Arrow with reference Meridian, 42, state planning area designation, checklist item 52, use designation of all lots within 200 feet of the site, checklist item 47, location and discretion of monuments to be set, and then I recommend the balance be waived for the purposes of deeming the application complete.
No objection.
Easy enough. How to carry... where is this on Newton's Corner Road?
Right outside the floor.
That's what I thought. Okay. Got it. Okay, gentlemen, any questions? Seeing none, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Mercer, do I have a second?
Second.
Councilman Nadel.
Mr. Beto.
Yes.
Mr. Carbonic.
Yes.
Mr. McNicholas.
Yes.
Mr. Mercer.
Yes.
Councilman Nadel.
Yes.
Mayor Leggio.
Yeah.
Mr. Friedman.
Yes.
Mr. Wetco.
Yes.
And Chairman Husser.
Yes.
Approved.
Thank you.
Good evening. Okay, this... on to applications this evening. We're going to change things around a little bit on the agenda. We are going to start with item number, well, letter B, then move on to A, and then keep the redevelopment hearing last. So, the first application this evening is case number SP-1141, 6249 US 9 LLC. So, for preliminary and final major site plan. Good evening again, Ken.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and board members. Mr. Chair, Kenneth Papel, on behalf of the applicant, this is a continued public hearing. We began the presentation of this to the board at the September 18th meeting. The September 18th meeting, I think we had a very meaningful exchange with the board and the board's professionals. We made a present, Dr. Cohen, your applicant, shared with the board his, his goals for this building, moving his, his practice to the building, and to have general offices, non-medical offices on the second floor. And during that hearing, there were comments from the board members, and there were comments from your staff, and it came a point where we asked if we could recess so that our professionals could revise the plans to be responsive to those comments. The opportunity that was given was adequate. The plans were revised and submitted, and your staff has issued new reports. I won't speak for your staff, but it appears that we have addressed most, if not all, of the concerns. And what I'd like to do, with your permission in this succinct presentation, recall Yosef Portnoy, who is the engineer, and have him take us through the bullet point revisions. Similarly, Schuman Greenbaum is the architect. Ask him to take us through the revisions. There were no open issues with regard to the traffic testimony, although Scott Kendall is here, if the board has any. And then lastly, we do need to have the planner put on the necessary proof for the bulk variance. Have the... so, it would be Yosef Portnoy, bullet points, Schuman Greenbaum, bullet points, and new testimony on planning.
Perfect.
Acceptable outline, Mr. Chair.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Then, Mr. Portnoy, if you could join us. I'll remind Mr. Portnoy that he's under oath, and that his credentials were previously shared, and the board accepted him as an expert in his field, as a professional engineer.
Mr. Portnoy.
Mr. Portnoy, if you could share with the board the presentation that you'll be making, and if you could alert Eileen as to the exhibits that you would like up for the board as you're going through your, the bullet points.
Hello, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you. So, we appreciate the feedback that we received, and we did submit revised plans. This exhibit that's up, this is A32. This is an updated version of the, you know, the color site plan exhibits. This will be, I think this will probably be sufficient to demonstrate the changes. Per, per our last hearing, we, we revised the, the architectural plans, we revised to relocate the egress door that was previously on the rear of the building, on the east side of the building, to the south side of the building by the exterior staircase. Along that, with that, we, we revised the trash enclosure and landscape to make sure that we, that there's a clear path for emergency egress from that, you know, south exit to be able to get to the parking lot. We have also revised the lighting to comply with the IES standards. We were able to achieve that with complying with the maximum 24-foot lighting height. And there were some additional, you know, revisions made based on the technical comments from the board engineer, planner, and, and the fire marshal.
Is that a complete summary of the revisions that were required to address the open concerns of the board and the board professionals?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, as the plan is before you reflects those revisions, I have no further examination of Mr. Portnoy. He is available to you and your professionals.
Gentlemen, any questions? Laura Jen, are you okay?
I have no questions at this time, Mr. Chairman.
No questions, Mr. Chair.
Great.
Thank you very much, Mr. Portnoy.
Thank you.
Schuman, if you could join us. Similarly, I remind you that you're under oath, and similarly, I remind the board that Schuman Greenbaum's credentials as an architect were placed before the board, and he was accepted as an expert. Again, revised plans were submitted, and your staff, and responsive to issues that were identified on the record by board members and the board professionals. Mr. Greenbaum, going to ask if you could take us through the revisions that were made, and what exhibit would you like?
It was A11, I believe.
A11, I'm going.
I think we would start with the third page of the order.
Is it not coming?
How about that?
I think it would be page, they wanted to see page, second, the second to last page, which is page seven. That's not the right drawing. That's not the right...
Oh, yeah, those are the older ones.
Those all don't hold. Yeah, you said A11. Those are A11.
Oh. Well, it was a new, a new exhibit number assigned.
Don't go to exhibits. Go to...
We do have handouts. It's old-fashioned, old school, but we have 11 by 17 handouts.
There we go.
Oh, that's lovely.
Go to the correct one.
There you go. There you go.
So, there was a concern brought up about the side elevations, side and rear elevations of the building, that there should be a base or water table, and that we should have, we should introduce verticality and breaking up the facade. As you can see in this drawing, we've, we've introduced those elements, and the coping carries through the entire building on both the north and south facades. And equally, if we look at the page, the page before that, we can see we did the same thing on the rear of the building.
So, Mr. Chair, I, I mean, I don't mean to cut you short at all, but your office worked very hard with my office to revise your design and come up with this very attractive building. So, I take no exception to the proposed architecture if the board is inclined to, to act in the affirmative.
It's a good-looking building.
Yeah, I agree. I like the sign, too.
You know, I, I like to say this. It's a process, and the process, with your professionals, it's a process, and that's what you got. It is a good-looking building.
Any, any questions?
I can be very efficient. I don't have any further questions of Mr. Greenbaum after hearing Jennifer Beam say that she likes the building.
Gentlemen, nothing? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And then, I, it's necessary for the planner to
Yep.
present the planning testimony that supports these plans that you've just examined. I'll, he will be sharing his credentials with you. We'll put him under oath, and then we'll see if we can put him on speed dial.
Perfect.
Mr. John Barry, if you could be sworn.
Mr. Barry, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to present to the board shall be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
For the record, please state your name, spell your last name, provide your business affiliation.
Sure. John Barry, B-A-R-R-E. I am the, excuse me, I'm the managing partner of MJ Planning LLP.
And if you could take a moment to share with the board and the public your education and professional background?
Sure. I have a Master of City and Regional Planning degree from Rutgers University. I'm a licensed professional planner, member of the American Institute of Certified Planners, both in good standing and have been since 2014. And I have regularly represented boards like yours and appeared before them. In fact, this is my...
We will accept your credentials. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that if you could give us a sense of what it is that you examined to be prepared this evening, and then take us through the necessary proof for the, the remaining bulk variances relief that's part of the plan.
Sure.
Thank you.
So, as typical, I had an opportunity to visit the property and see the existing conditions surrounding context, the neighboring properties. Had a call with the development team here and discussed the purpose of the application, reviewed the plans, reviewed the township's planning documents, the various professional reports. So, I had a, a sense of everything that's going on and has transpired up to this point. So, you know what the application's all about. I won't, won't belabor that point. It's a unique, interesting piece of property. It's got somewhat narrow frontage that exists along Route 9, along the, the northbound side of Route 9. The property goes back and then bows out. It almost kind of looks like a hammer if you, if you rotate it. And it's got a, quite a, quite a lot of environmental constraints that limit the developable area of the property, push the development up toward the highway, which is frankly where, where we want it to be. The relief that's being sought this evening is several, I would classify them as relatively innocuous bulk variances and several design exceptions. The first of the variances is a side yard setback. The required setback is equal to the building height, which I believe is 27 and a half feet to the proposed parapet wall. The building itself is setback 25 feet, which is the, the baseline setback. And then we have that exterior stair tower that's partially open that you saw in the architectural plans. It's setback 15.65 feet to the southern property line. This image gives us a really good context for how it relates to the neighboring property. You can see that the building itself is essentially behind the development that, that neighbors it to the south, and the area where the, the setback encroaches at the most, at the stair tower toward the back of the building. There's a substantial vegetated area on the neighboring property, and the neighboring, there's no use going on in that back part of the property. So, there's really no, no direct impact or detriment that I would see associated with that. I mentioned the, the frontage, which is an existing non-conformity. We have developed sites, both north and south, really not a, a practical way to cure that deficiency. It's 193.3 feet where 200 feet is required, and that's going to remain as it is and has been. Next, we have two items of relief related to the riparian buffer and stream corridor preservation ordinance here in the township. The setbacks are required to be measured from the edge of the buffer area. Doing so on this property would essentially render it non-developable. There's, that would be left with a, a triangle that's kind of dashed in red, if you could see, toward the middle of the parking lot. That wouldn't be large enough for a building, for parking, for anything at that point if, if we were to comply fully with, with those requirements. So, there's an element of hardship associated with that situation and the ordinance requirement, certainly to, to enable some development of this property. And then there's also a restriction on clearing, cutting, grading, construction within the riparian buffer area, and some of the development will be the back part of the building, a portion of the parking lot, and the, the stormwater management basin will be partially located within that riparian zone. Again, it's pretty much impossible to develop this property without some encroachment there. The design exceptions, quickly, the drive aisle width is required to be 30 feet. We've got 25 feet. Don't anticipate larger vehicles, trucks, or the type of thing you'd have come into Walmart or to the BJ's at this property. So, I think that the slightly narrower width has a benefit of both practicality for the site, because it's not needed to be wider, and also keeping in mind the environmental constraints and minimizing the impervious surface on the site. So, there's probably a, probably a better alternative, frankly, to have a little bit narrower pavement going on with the property. The illumination levels, you heard the testimony that the lighting plan was revised to be in compliance with general standards. We are a little bit outside of what the, the township requires, which is a minimum of .3 anywhere on site, and an average of .5 foot candles across the whole area. Minimum is about .5, and the average is...
John, I don't mean to interrupt, but when Yosef said that he complies with IES, that's pretty much all we need to hear.
Okay. I'll give him over. Next, next one, there's, there was identified in the report a waiver for the landscape strip between the building and parking lot. There's a landscape strip. You can see the little green strip along the front side, which is the most functional part. The waiver, I assume, is adjacent to the concrete pad, which is for loading and unloading with the dumpster. Probably not practical to maintain a landscape strip in that area, so we're better off without. And then, lastly, the, there's pedestrian walkways are required to be minimum four feet, except they could be eight feet when located in front of commercial storefronts. We've got a five-foot wide walkway in front of the building that is sufficient for the relatively low foot traffic here. As far as the proofs for As far as the proofs for the variances, as I mentioned, there's an element of hardship associated with the site in general. I think that both the riparian buffer encroachments and development areas and the width of the property could be looked at as C-one hardship variances, because we've got conditions that are existing that can't, can't be done, can be cured, and no, nothing can be done with the property as a result if they were to be fully complied with. And then the remaining variances could be looked at as C-two, where we look at the benefits, advancing purposes of zoning as part of the overall project, outweighing any detriments associated with the relief. The use, the medical uses permitted in the zone, providing a, a medical user here advances the general welfare, certainly promotes the public health as purpose A, and the development of this parcel is beneficial to the Route Nine corridor as a whole. And I know you've got a redevelopment study later on this evening, but certainly promoting the general health, public health, safety and welfare and enhancing the Route Nine corridor goes along with this project. And then, I'll say, purpose G, provides sufficient space for a variety of commercial uses, again, fits in with, with the highway corridor and certainly advances that goal. And then, as to the negative criteria, I think, looking at the context of the property, we've got a vast majority of the site is going to be undeveloped, protecting those environmentally sensitive areas. The slight encroachments where they exist are adjacent to other commercial properties, the nearest residences are quite a ways back, so there's not going to be any appreciable detriment to any of the neighboring properties or the public right of way. And the overall project is certainly consistent with the ordinance as permitted uses and consistent with the master plan, including one of the goals added to the 2018 reexamination report of encouraging new businesses and industries along the township's highway corridors. So, with that, I'd say we've got a good application, worked with the professionals here to get it to where it is today, and I'd submit that the board has justification to grant the relief.
I'd like to add something, just the driveway width of twenty-five feet, I met with the fire, I met with the fire chief to go over that, and you, in, in the packet is his, he had no issues with the design, he found it to be an acceptable driveway design. And also, asking for relief for some of the landscaping, the, what we have said to Ms. Spiro is, and, and I'll place it on the record, we're not looking to avoid planting, and we're not looking to save money on landscaping, we'll gladly find other places on the property, but putting landscaping in the parking lot, in those islands, it just isn't, it's not productive.
I'm not super supportive of the landscape islands in the parking lots either, the plows hit them, they become a tripping hazard, the landscaping doesn't survive, and they wind up becoming an ashtray. So, I would prefer the landscaping along the perimeter of the site and remove the islands from the inside, it's not really functional.
Mr. Chair, those were the clarifications, I very much appreciate Ms. Beam's sharing. That is the applicant's direct presentation to the board, and we're prepared to rest. If there's any questions of any of the witnesses.
Okay.
The only thing I'd ask is a very brief opportunity to sum.
Sure. Gentlemen, is there any questions? Sure.
The only question I have is, two circles in the lower, behind the, underneath the parking pad where the garbage is going to be? So, there's, that's changed where there's not going to be any landscaping there, because that's the only direct route from the emergency exit out towards the parking lot, or from the responders trying to get from the parking lot to the emergency exit.
I, I would just recommend removing those two trees next to the loading, because he's right, if someone has to go out those stairs, you have a masonry trash enclosure, and then you have the two trees, so it will be causing impediment to people getting out safely, I would recommend just removing them.
We'll, we'll find another place.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Anything else, gentlemen? Gentlemen over there? Okay. Ken, at this time, I'll open it up to the public, if anybody has any questions on this application, comments? Seeing none, close the public portion.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, it has been an absolute pleasure for us to represent Dr. Heim Cohen, he's most anxious to bring his practice here to Howell, and he has worked with us and has authorized us to work with your staff. I'm very proud of the work product that was created by this team. I think that the presentation that was made to the board this evening makes clear that the requests that were made by the board and the board's professionals have been honored, and we respectfully ask the board to consider favorably granting this preliminary and final site plan approval, with all the conditions that were placed on the record this evening and previously.
Great.
Thank you.
Just remember, this, this is what I wear. Give you a heads up. All right, gentlemen, I will entertain a motion, just, I guess, for Eileen and everyone, Mayor Leggio will not be voting on this application. Right? I guess he is abstaining, or he just not vote? He didn't, he didn't watch the video?
And he was absent.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Mr. Mercer, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. McNicholas?
Mr. Beto?
Yes.
Mr. Carbonic?
Yes.
Mr. McNicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Councilman Minadell?
Yes.
Mr. Friedman?
Yes.
Mr. Wetko?
Yes.
And Chairman Husser?
Yes.
Approved.
Mr. Chairman, all board members and board professionals, thank you.
Thank you.
May I have just five minutes?
Absolutely. Yes, we'll, we'll take a recess for five minutes as Mr. Pape has the next application.
The board will now take a recess and reconvene at seven forty-three PM. Thank you.
I've heard about it. How?
You're out of time, they're not, they're not granting the extension. Their prior lawyer consent, like, you don't just get to unconsent after the fact.
Strength and walking again, just to get out of bed and move, we really don't get all the sleep overnight.
Great idea. I haven't really heard from him, like, this is.
He hasn't responded to my texts.
Like, the prior times that he's been in the hospital, he's, he's checked and stuff like that, like, I have, I've talked to him twice, he calls me.
He called me from ICU.
Yeah, me too, to schedule a meeting. I'm like, click.
It was easy.
But you spoke to him last week.
Yeah, he didn't sound good. I know it was very brief, it was like, for like, a minute or two, and like, got very out of breath very quickly, and he didn't.
Fair amount of pain.
Yeah, that's what he said.
It's terrible.
It is pretty bad.
We have all his meetings covered.
Virginia's the only bit.
Only meet, we got one odd night next Wednesday, and I was not here, I'm in Florida, we got, we got nine meetings in one night.
Sheets.
Yeah, sheets, so we've got it covered, thankfully, we have a attorney up in Persipony, who's in the governing body in Edison, sat as their class three member, so she actually knows how a board functions, so, got a pinch hit up there for us, and so able to juggle. Usually at the most, we have five in a good night.
Yeah, nine's a lot.
We're awful, that's fine, I think the schedule's got pushed, and they have.
Well, it's the holidays and stuff like that.
Because my whole, my whole October, November and December calendars are adjusted for a couple of my clients.
Me too, the league.
You always have to.
And the Jewish holidays seem to have affected October.
They're early this year.
Yeah.
I always know because there's a synagogue getting into the street from my house, and they always got a sign up at their, signage out in front as to which holiday is when, or.
Yeah. Like, Wendy from your office emailed the court, because we had mediation scheduled, and said, you know, it's Yom Kippur, can we get another date? And they said, no. They said, send someone else.
Apparently, apparently they do that to a lot of people.
Yeah.
Got a lot of lawyers and other people. Pretty PO'd about it.
Yeah, I agree.
Come on, there's, there's no need for that.
We're not going to schedule it during the league, because, you know, that makes sense.
Unless you move all the hearings down to Atlantic City.
I mean, they're all like, Zoom.
Crazy men.
Which right now has a dead battery. Still probably not the same. So, I'm like, you're wasting my time. Like, this, this song and dance and this little tap dance that you got going on here is like, wasting everyone's time. I'm not supporting you. Well, we're really good players in this forum, I go, are you though? Did you not sue the last time? Like, you were one of two towns in the whole state that litigated, so. I don't know that that would be considered a good player.
What town is?
Westfunsen. I'm like, hmm, I'm not thinking, I said, you've got on the finish line, kicking and screaming and being dragged every time. So, this player, this is not their face. I said, so, I've told you what to do, I know what's going to happen, they took a vacant land adjustment, at like, six acres to the acre, they're not entitled to it, when they told them to put realistic acreages or densities in there, it went over their number. So, like, you're not entitled to a vacant land adjustment, and he just won. Uh, David Novak, he works for Joe Burden. And he knows, like, he's stuck, you know what I mean? He's not really.
He's just representing.
He's not really in control of the situation, and, uh.
This one where they need to be able to say, we can blame the judge, or this is just out of pure angst that they just don't want?
This is a mayor that goes on.
This is that crazy man.
No, that's Eastwinder, but this is a mayor that goes on social media congratulating the planning board for approving warehouses to prevent a fourth.
Well, that's brilliant.
And Judge Jacobson saw it.
It really is, a lot of cars in my.
Or someone would have made sure she saw it.
She saw it.
Even though I used to drive for Vance.
She was a.
She's the author of the roadmap.
And then I know it's T-O-U-I-N, what way I'm going.
The engineer.
Donna? Bollock? O-L-L-O-C-K? She's. Where is she from?
That's fine, soon I'll have her here.
Okay.
Did you talk to Peggy?
I did. She said, uh, they got her a point, she showed me some mail, Rashari sent us. Okay.
I don't have time to talk to you about it.
Had it four years.
We're ready, sir. Yep, thank you.
Ready when you are, Eileen.
The meeting will now reconvene.
Okay, we are now on to case number SP dash one-one-three-five Starcap Holdings LLC. This is a preliminary and final major site plan. Mr. Pape, again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Kenneth Pape of the firm High Open Pape, on behalf of your applicant, this is a request for site plan approval for an existing daycare center that was built as a Goddard School twenty-plus years ago and has been part of the community for twenty-plus years. Our clients acquired it more than three years ago and have been operating the daycare center there with considerable success. The request is to add a second floor to, add additional capacity to, for the students that are looking to use this facility. The presentation, we're in zone, we're in zone, it's an existing building that we're looking to put a second floor on, and the presentation will be to identify taking a building, I will not say a tired building, but a building that was built decades ago to give it a very fresh refacing and to embellish, substantially embellish the landscaping and to create the necessary improvements to support the second floor of the building. The presentation will be made through Louis Zugner, the professional engineer responsible for the plans that are before the board, Steve Radosi, who is the architect who did the redraft of, the redesign of the building, Scott Cannell is our traffic expert, we have Mrs. Rabinowitz, who is the director of the school, I asked that she join us this evening and just to describe the school's operation to you, I think that although it may not necessarily be planning testimony, it's very beneficial to understand how this school operates. And then lastly, John Barry is our planner. But if, if I could, at the outset, Mr. Chair, members of the board, I spoke with your, your professionals before the hearing, and much like the hearing that we just concluded, making a presentation where we get to the point where we have shared the first presentation of the professionals and, and ask for your comments, and then agree to come back and be responsive, it seems to be a very efficient program. So, I would like to, with your permission, if time allows, to have Louis testify and Steve Radosi testify, and Mrs. Rabinowitz, if this time, we could have Scott, and at that point, be looking for your comments and your staff's comments, and then looking for an opportunity to come back.
Perfect, sounds good.
If it works for you?
Yes, thank you.
No, thank you. Then, Mr. Louis Zugner, you're up, if we could have you sworn, and we'll go right into the substance.
Sir, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to present before the board on this application held me nothing but the truth, all truth?
I do. My name is Louis.
Director, please state your name and spell your last name and your business affiliation.
Louis Zugner, Z-U-E-G-N-E-R, with Mid-Atlantic Engineering. And if you would share with the board your education and professional background? Certainly, I have an engineering degree from Virginia Tech, a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, as well as several other states, founding principal of the firm at Atlantic Engineering, been testifying throughout New Jersey for over twenty-five years.
We'll accept your credentials, thank you.
Thank you. And Louis was with me the night when we had this terrible thing happen, and your license is in good standing? It is. We were in front of a board, there was an older gentleman who said, oh, I don't renew my license, I stopped doing that. Well, you can't testify. So, we always ask, is your license in good standing, because once, once was enough. I'm going to ask if you could first identify the exhibits from which you would like to rely as, as you begin the presentation, identify those exhibits, and then we'll go into an executive overview of our client's goals, and then let's go through some of the technical elements of the plan. Sounds good, I'd like to work from two exhibits, one is labeled aerial exhibit, and this shows regionally where our property is, and the other's going to be a colored rendering, which essentially is taking the elements of the site plan on a colored sheet to make it a little more presentable for this evening. It's a great place to start. Is this, this is the aerial upon which you'll begin your testimony? This is, yes. This is. Open it. That works. Yeah. There we go. There we go. So, just to quickly orient everyone, I'm sure you're familiar with the area, our property is outlined in white here. We're essentially at the intersection of Church Road and Kent Road, Kent Road being just to the left of that site. In, in that particular view, you can also see Route Nine, we don't touch Route Nine, but you can see the proximity. Just below our property, the large building is Walmart. Walmart actually wraps around our property, so that grass area behind us is their stormwater facilities. Couple other elements, I think, to understand, obviously the zoning, we're in the Highway Development One, HD One Zone, daycare, which is there now, is a permitted use. There are no wetlands or streams affecting this parcel. In total, that lot's one point eight-four acres, and I think as Mr. Pape had mentioned, a one-story building, there's daycare at the moment, with playgrounds and parking. If you could, maybe with the next exhibit? That would be. An executive overview of what we would like the board to consider favorably? So, here, colored rendering showing the site, hopefully with some clarity, you can see in sort of a yellow color at the center, that's the building, the architect will speak to the building itself. As we get into some description, you can see there also in dark and lighter colors, that's the, showing you in dark the existing and then the new parking, in lighter yellow around the perimeter are some sidewalks, and at the back fenced in is the playground area. Essentially, this is an expansion to include a second story on that building, there are two outside stairwells at the front and the back, these are for meeting code requirements and access to the second floor, of course. We've added parking in this layout to accommodate sixteen total classrooms. And we'll go through those numbers. We're providing, as Mr. Pape mentioned earlier, additional landscaping throughout. We are improving stormwater management for this site. And essentially, other than one element, we are meeting the bulk criteria. There'll be some other relief items we'll go through, but the key element in this, from the bulk criteria, is the rear stairwell is closer to the rear property line than the setback. Perhaps we can go into the over, the site plan design elements. And I'm gonna defer to you as to where you would like to begin. I would like you, however, to talk about the existing drainage and the new drainage improvements early on. Okay, you can start there. I know that there's some benefits to the township that would be part of the stormwater system, and I'd like to make certain that those become part of the record. So, essentially, as a pre-existing site, there's really no impact to grading or elevation to a site. It's staying, you know, more or less the same. Although we are making stormwater improvements. And I'm sure you've heard, you know, prior testimony and other applications on stormwater. We're not based on impact size, a major development. So we're not, I'll call it, forced into hitting any specific criteria. But we are improving the stormwater that's there now. There are a couple of underground infiltration systems on the site. And we are essentially expanding that to make sure there's no increase in any flows from this site from before to after the expansion of the parking lot. We do that in a couple of ways. I probably can describe it from the rendering.
Okay.
One of the key features at the bottom right, you can see there's an area of green. And in that location, we have excavated or proposed to excavate a, what's called a small-scale infiltration basin. So that would be an added feature, providing significantly more volume for stormwater. That would also, based on soils, infiltrate. We've taken an additional element of one of the existing underground infiltration locations, and we have expanded the pipe to make that larger as well. And that's at the downstream, sort of the bottom left of the site, where everything is flowing directionally. And then through some discussions with your engineer's office, my understanding that we will need to connect that outflow, which does not presently, into a nearby inlet, which is just left off of that page. And that can be done outside of the road pavement, but within the right-of-way. So we can accommodate that as well. And will the stormwater, this is an enhanced stormwater system beyond what is required by regulation? By the literal rule of the regulation, there's, because we're not a major development, we don't have to improve the stormwater system. But here, it obviously makes sense to do it. We're expanding the parking lot. And we are not increasing the flows based on that expansion of the parking lot. Making improvements to what's there. If we could do, I think, although Mr. Kennel is here to help us with circulation and parking, I think it's part of your design, if you could take us through the intended circulation on site. I might just, before that, mention one thing here before I forget. The basin I described has a retaining wall, and that is at the front yard. And your ordinance talks to relief for walls and fences to provide, that don't provide fifty percent sort of light and air passing through. It may still require relief, although I think it might not also. That's an excavated basin, so that wall sits down in the ground. You're actually looking right over the- So, whether that needs relief or not, it's not a wall sticking up that you look at the face.
It does need relief.
Understood. Understood. And then, as you said, going back to circulation and parking. The existing parking lot is that one in front of the building. We talked about the light and dark pieces of pavement. There are thirty-two existing spaces, and we're proposing to expand that. By requirement, we would meet to exceed the required seventy-two spaces based on the new number of classrooms. We achieve that through sixty-six spaces, seven of which are EV spaces. And with the credit, that gets us to seventy-three, where seventy-two are required. Just a couple of other dimensional elements. The drive aisles here are twenty-five feet wide. Parking spaces are nine feet by nineteen feet deep. All of that's compliant with the ordinance. We did have the fire department look at this site, and they provided a letter with no concerns. And I would state, even though there will be traffic testimony on it, from my opinion, it's existing in and out to this site. There's good circulation. I believe it's safe and adequate.
These EV spaces, they have chargers in each one?
They will have chargers between, so that one charger serves two spaces. There's one stock, two chargers.
Is that mandatory?
Yes.
They don't need their own charger. They can have one charger in between and have-
This is some mandatory thing for the state to put these EV chargers?
Yep.
Oh, it is?
It's mandatory, and the state also gives them the ability to take an EV credit. I'll be honest, it's not something I support. But it is something that the state says, if they provide them, they get credit for them.
EV's dead.
Well, EV at a daycare center in particular, not really sure it's appropriate, but-
There's a wall on two seconds away for that.
What, do you know what, are you gonna make, are these just gonna be made ready, or are they gonna have actual chargers?
The goal was that actual charge. I didn't think that we were allowed to have them made ready under these circumstances.
And what level charger are you proposing?
I believe that these would be the, I think it's the Level Two.
Okay. Just because Level One is like a residential charger, and it's designed for you to plug your car in overnight to get like a charge. So if it's a Level One charger here, people are gonna get no benefit out of it. So Level Two is, I think, the minimum that I would recommend.
Yeah, but this is private property. They don't want these people pulling in there.
Well, what if it's an employee?
There are ways to control access to the chargers, right?
In order to trespass.
That's correct.
John, I just take it as a wisdom.
I get it, but this is, you know, it comes right from Trenton. We had, we had no control over it.
Ken, Louis, can I have a couple of questions up to this point? So, you had thirty-two parking spaces, and then with the addition of the parking lot, you're at seventy-three.
Seventy-three, yeah. Credits, sixty-six.
Sixty-six parking, seventy-three with the credits for the, okay. The second story addition, how many square feet is the second story addition?
The numbers I have are the total footprint of the building, it being seven-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eighty-nine.
So you're basically building and you're replicating the building?
A little bit less.
Okay. So you're doubling the size of the building, in essence, with classrooms? Oh, I'll wait, sorry.
Well, it's, guys, it's not seventy-three parking spaces.
It's sixty-six.
Parking spaces that give them seventy-three credits for parking, because of the bonus credits they get for the EV spaces.
Just like a make-believe parking-
It's like a bonus credit.
Yes.
It's like when someone says you have two and a half kids.
It's a hypothetical.
And the cars obviously can't- And EV spaces, cars can't park on top of each other, so you're really not getting the extra spaces, just- Okay, so, my question is, you know, with the addition of the, the addition of the addition and that parking, I've driven by this place a million times, right? I'm a little concerned with the drop-off and the pickup and the amount of people and the parking that is going to be there with the addition. Especially, you know, if, if it's anything like where my kids went and they have an event on a Saturday, and you got kids and siblings and parents. Is there the chance that this parking would not be sufficient?
I think we all wanna end. The testimony of operations and the testimony from Scott would be significant. It's an important question for us to work out with you.
Okay.
This is a, this facility is somewhat unique. There'll be no Saturday activities-
Right.
-in this building.
Okay.
This building has an existing community base that is going to be the community base that's served. And the director, who is, is here or coming? She's, she'll be here no later than eight fifteen.
Okay.
She's prepared to go through, she's been the director for the three years. She can go over the operation.
Okay.
But it's something I think we need to discuss with you.
Yeah.
We also want no on-street parking.
Absolutely. Understood.
Very tricky intersection over there. It's a busy area.
Understood.
So, you know, what we want, what we're gonna get to the end of that, we understand that. But we want it at least in the right of that, we have no on-street parking.
All right, well, we'll wait and-
Wait, listen, it's fine, Mr. Pape.
Thank you.
Sure. May we continue?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, thank you.
No, this is why, this is the part that we come for. We are looking for your feedback. So to continue a little bit on, in terms of the parking area and circulation, loading for this building would all be by a van-sized vehicle. So there'd be no large-size truck, need for a large-size truck for delivery here. Pedestrian circulation's also been looked at here, so we're adding sidewalks along the street and then connecting that from the street to the building. You can see that in the lighter color on the plan. All the parking facing the building, there are bollards placed along the sidewalk throughout that length. One element that we would need to comply with, there's an expectation of every sixty-five feet having depressed sidewalk for access from the parking to the sidewalk. That would need to be added to the plan, but we would comply with that. That can be done. I think, if we can talk about the existing parking lot and its distance from the street and the relief that would be required for that parking facility? So there's a specific requirement, it's a waiver, if you don't meet it. It says parking should be discouraged in front yards. Where it is, like it is here, it should be fif, uh, sorry, a hundred feet from the street. We're obviously dealing with an existing building, an existing parking lot. So we don't meet that one-hundred-foot setback for the parking area. I think the way we've looked at addressing it, and we'll get in a little bit on landscaping, that green area that we do have between Kent Road and our site just has some trees in it, and it's our intent to landscape that more, much more thoroughly. To some of the board members that I have not presented too many applications to, we never come to you without going to the Environmental Commission. We never come to you without meeting with Shari Spiro on the site. And we never come to you without having sit-down meetings with the fire chief. And all of those have occurred. We've been working with, fire chief, we've already shared that we have their approval letter. The Environmental Commission, we've gone to the Environmental Commission recently. We'll speak to that before we conclude. And the landscaping that is shown. We've also met with Shari and have agreed that we'll, again, have her revisit the landscaping with any outstanding issues or concerns that she has. And I don't think she has any that we will comply with. Could we go into, could we go into just trash and recycling? The existing site does have a outdoor trash enclosure. It's right near Kent Road, near the entrance. And we're proposing to move that to the back of the site for a couple of reasons. One being aesthetic. The other being sort of how the building itself would operate. It's a more convenient location. I think there's been some questions raised about access by a trash vehicle. There's certainly direct access to it. But a trash vehicle would then need to back up from that location. It would be a private hauler, and all hauls, all removal of trash would be scheduled for off-hours when students and vehicles weren't there. I'm sure Mr. Kennel could also speak a little bit to the circulation element of it. Could you identify the opportunity that you built into the parking lot for a turnaround of the trash vehicle backing out? So along the path back to the trash enclosure, we've taken what would have been the area of the last parking spaces on the right, and we've chosen to stripe that off, so- Come down. Towards the Walmart, the last- Yep, come down, come down. First space on that side. Right, they see all the little blue dots for the EV spaces. And the last one would be- Right there. Striped off as a turnaround location. Talking to your engineer's office, there's probably still some work to do in the final design of that to make it a little bit larger of a radius and access for turning around. But that would provide an area for a trash truck to turn around without backing all the way up to the entrance.
I just wanna say for the record, I think that's a terrible idea. This board, Jen, I'm happy to hear from Mr. Kennel, but this is a daycare, number one. And we don't typically like garbage trucks backing up for a long distance. And a garbage truck backing up for that distance to get to that turnaround is, how long? Eighty feet, a hundred feet?
Can you just stop it, Laura, or make sure it's all valid?
Well, that's one way. I wanted to hear, and there are other locations that could be, it's just-
Just eliminate this whole thing with, you know, it's privately owned and make sure that the company's coming at five o'clock in the morning.
Respectfully, that's, no.
Is it possible?
I mean, they can say whatever they want, but, you know, at the end of the day, it's our responsibility to make sure what you guys approve is safe, and that is not safe. I, I mean, remember, Laura, when we did the townhouse development up on Strickland Road? It was a whole big to-do. The garbage truck backed over a kid. So, I mean, this is not ideal.
Any backing up is negative.
Yeah, this is not ideal. I think you guys need to go back and think of something else.
We have, the other locations are putting trash in the front yard.
Which is how it exists today?
Yes. Yeah, it's in the, it's in the front yard. It seemed that it was something that we thought we should be curing. We're hearing differently, we, well, when we meet with you-
And then they could back up.
We'll work that out.
So what about, taking it where it is and just turning it?
The problem is, is if they remove too many parking spaces to provide this bump out or this turnaround, then they're underneath their parking requirement, and they would need a variance for parking.
If you did have it up front, and it closes real nice, right?
Well, and Mayor, of note, that's where it currently is.
You don't want it there.
Also, the, where you eliminated, where you had the two EV spots, you said you eliminated that for a turnaround. Can you return those two spots and make the turnaround all the way down the end?
There's a-
Like, to the, yes, those two spots there. Can you eliminate those as parking spots, make that a turnaround? I don't know the turnaround radius or what the exact measurement on that is, but-
Well, my suggestion is, knowing they need to come back, I think they're hearing that they need to look at something and an alternative. So I think, rather than continuing to hypothetically design it, I mean, I don't disagree that perhaps somewhere near the rear, there makes sense to be a K-turn movement if they really wanna push it to the back of the site. Perhaps they look at keeping it and screening it a little bit differently where it currently exists. I think they've heard the comment, and I think that they know they need to rework that.
Most appreciative of the dialogue. We'll get together with-
And I know we're gonna get into flow a little bit differently, with a different testimony. Would it be like a consideration for one way in, one way out? So I'll leave that for that, when we get to that question, that part of it. Is it one way in and one way out?
We can talk about how it's designed now.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, I see. Okay, I can't, I can't.
Within the parking itself, there's no one-way-only traffic. But there's one way out and one way in.
Right, one way in, okay. And then one, and then what is it, two-way on the other driveway?
Yes.
Both driveways are one-way. It's the circulation, internal circulation that's two-way. But the access to Kent Road, one way in, one way out.
One way out.
Yeah.
That's an existing system. It's an existing system.
Okay.
Briefly lighting. So obviously, the site does presently have lighting. In our proposal, we're taking the lights that are actually mounted to the building, and they're being relocated on the building, same lights, to provide better coverage. There are five poles out front that would remain. I think there's a little bit of control of those lights and design work we still need to work through with your consultants on to, they would like to see it a little bit dimmer to meet some of the ordinance requirements, which we believe we can do. Just need to work through that a little bit. And currently, the property is serviced by sewer and water. If you could confirm that sewer and water service is available for the expansion? The services are there. That would continue. And based on the way we see it, there would be no changes to those at the moment.
This piece of property has a basement?
Does this piece of property have?
Is there a basement on this?
No, no, Mayor, no.
Is this a small space or something?
No, it's a-
No, it's a slab building, yeah.
Just asking.
No. The, I, I made some comments about the landscaping and working with Shari, but if you could just take us through the landscaping that is there, please.
So what's being proposed are, we like to sort of think of it in a few different elements, foundation plantings around the building. And I think of it as a headlight hedge, but a hedge along that front row of parking, so those spaces where cars would aim out towards Kent Road, there'd be a hedge along there. And then added trees throughout in the basin and then along the street frontage, uh, and some, uh, additional buffering towards Walmart. So pretty substantial additional planting. Uh, we have and would continue to work with Mrs. Spiro, she's provided some very detailed and, and good suggestions on what should go in there. Uh, we did also supply Woodlands Management Plan, uh, there are eight trees being removed, but thirty-two being planted, which meets the requirements in the Woodlands Management Plan.
I think that is a good overall description of the application. I have no further direct questions of Lewis this evening. We would welcome any comments or direction that the board or the board's professionals have to share beyond that, which you've already done.
Gentlemen, any further questions?
Is there any, um, after the second floor is built, is there any second, uh, rooftop units or any kind of mechanicals going on the roof?
Mr. Radasti is next up, and we'll ask him to include that in his presentation.
Jennifer?
Uh, I just have a couple of things. Um, there's no sidewalk connecting the sidewalk along Kent Road to the building, which requires relief.
Actually, uh, and maybe we haven't gotten it to you, but we can connect it, I thought it was on the last set of plans we sent to you. At the, on this image, the left, it wraps around the exit.
Oh, I do see it, I do see it.
But we did not originally, and that was a comment you had, and we added it.
Okay, and then, um, I wanna talk about the shed, which also requires relief in the back.
Yeah.
What, what is the purpose?
The, the shed is, you, you'll hear from operations, but the shed is used to, um, pack away the seasonal outdoor items, that's what it, that's its purpose.
No equipment.
And, and since the original plan we got to you, we have moved it, it was originally moved way to the back property line, right on the property line, it's now pulled up.
See, so, you know what would be helpful, because before, when I tried to put up the plans, you told me you didn't want me to put up those plans, which I usually use so that I can point to these things, and you wanted me to use this exhibit, which is inconsistent with the plans.
Correct.
So, just so the board can see, if I go to the colorize rendering, this is not colorized, you'll see that the shed is not here, I believe it's now in this location.
Correct.
That location where you've got the shed now, it's not, not up here for us.
Yeah.
But if the garbage truck was to come down, and the enclosure for the, the garbage truck was put where the shed is.
Right.
So the truck could turn in, and then the truck could k turn out into the spot where you have the dumpster right now, that could be possible.
Well, that's.
I don't know, I'm not a, I'm not a, I'm not a, but that's, that looks like the, the truck could make the movement all the way down, turn into it, and then k turn out, and then you just lose those two, those two spots. I'm just making a suggestion, I'm just, if that could work, and then you could have your shed next to it too.
By having identified the shed as an issue, Jen, is there a, is there?
It was just a setback, because it's supposed to be setback, you know, twice the height.
Yep.
And where, where you showed it originally was on the property line, so it did not comply. I will note, however, that what's behind the site is, is the basin for Walmart, so the proximity of this, they just need relief for it, but the proximity of it to the property line, I'm not really that concerned about, because I don't think it's impactful to a, a detention basin.
Got it.
Right.
But is it your intent to keep it in this location?
I think we would prefer having it, uh, further back to the property line, it provides for more play area inside the fence, but, uh.
I would recommend that.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
It's a separate property, separate property.
Why not, it's a potential bomb back there, that way you can, that space, and maybe you can figure out this, this turnaround with your, who you don't, it's all leaving it about. It doesn't matter to me, you gotta be clear, those, they're not.
I, I like hearing your suggestions.
Mr. Chair and Mayor.
How I am, I'll tell you right now, I'll tell you straight up.
This is, this is why we, we don't come with an expectation that we have all the answers, we come to engage in this colloquy.
All right, so garbage can and shed, you guys will go back to the drawing board on this.
You got it.
You have any?
And, and, and the sidewalk, have you been identified?
Yep.
It was.
But it was on there.
It was on there, it's just not on the rendering.
I think we're good on that one.
One more question, maybe, I don't know if the other answer, playground areas.
Yeah.
That's gonna be compliant to what the state wants with the Asher Turner.
It's a lot of, it's a big area.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's.
Whatever the state is.
It's, it's state regulation.
Yeah, whatever the state.
Right, right. I have nothing further, and if, if we're, if, if we're finished with Lewis, I'm ready to go to Mr. Radasti and.
Yeah, that's fine.
Some architecture. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
So if we have Mr.?
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to present to the board concerning this pending application will be nothing but the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I am.
I do just wanna state, I'm gonna apologize to the witness, there was another updated color site rendering, which shows the sidewalk and the relocated shed, that I had up, I guess, a prior one, and there's a newer exhibit, so I, just because I noted that it wasn't, and I was working off the plan. So I do just wanna note that they did have that on the rendering, um, we just have two different site, colored site renderings.
There's only so, so much you could do, Laura, yeah.
When I, when you're trying to work the computer and take notes and think all at the same time.
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
And Mr. Radasti, if you would take a few moments to share with all your education and your professional background.
Mr. Chair, I would submit Mr. Radasti is here practically every single meeting, and we have accepted his.
Absolutely, yep.
Let's get some proof that his license is in good standing tonight.
Uh, yes, my license is in good standing.
Then I'm gonna ask if you could identify the exhibits from which you'll testify, and if you could begin with the exterior of the building and to, there's a question that was brought to our attention about the rooftop equipment, if you'll be certain to include that in your presentation.
Uh, yes, so the exhibit, I believe, is A twenty-two, uh, and this is sheet, CS two, proposed elevations dated ten-four twenty-four.
I mean, Mr. Chair, I could also stipulate, Mr. Radasti works very closely with my office on every application he's here with you. I take no exception to the design of the building, I think as usual, he's done a really good job.
Thank you, thank you.
Could we, we're, we're, we're gonna take that as our foundation?
I, I mean, it looks more of a, like a resort than a childcare center, it's, it's a nice-looking building.
Thank you.
That's very nice of you.
Um, any questions, gentlemen?
Can we talk about the rooftops?
Oh, yeah, I'm assuming there's gonna be nothing with a pitched roof, right?
Look, I wanna just.
Right, so the, so the roof has a five-on-twelve, uh, roof pitch, um, and inside the roof, there'll be split units.
Okay.
So there'll be, in, inside the attic, correct.
Got it.
What's the siding, is it just regular bottom siding?
No, the siding, we have different siding materials, uh, to break up the facade, so at the bottom, we have, uh, a faux stone veneer, like a cultured stone. We have, um, horizontal siding, and we also have a, a sheater look, a cedar look sheet. And then we have trim work to break it up, so it's not just a big vinyl box.
So like we're, we're a stinkin' Poconos.
Am I thanking Mr. Radasti for coming?
Yeah, thank you.
Are you comfortable?
I'm comfortable. Steve's, Steve's office has always worked very well with my office, and he's always taken everything that we have suggested.
That's much appreciated.
And now I barely have to do anything, 'cause he's already gonna know what I have to say, so, he does it from the beginning.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Pages of outline. So Mrs. Rabenowitz, who is the director of the school, has arrived.
Okay.
And I'd like Mrs. Rabenowitz to come up.
That'd be great.
And we'll go through, I have my outline for her on here.
Good evening.
Good evening. If we could have Mrs. Rabenowitz, if you could stand to swear or affirm.
Do you swear or do you affirm that the testimony you're about to present to the board concerning this pending application shall be the truth and nothing but the truth?
Thank you. Mrs. Rabenowitz, I, I, board members, I'm not offering Mrs. Rabenowitz as an expert, um, but Mrs. Rabenowitz is the director of the school, and I, uh, and is very familiar with the school's operation, so she's qualified to describe it to you, but we don't have degrees and that say that we're.
No, that's fine.
Expert at being a director of the school.
Yep.
So I, if you could begin, this is where they're picking your voice up, if you could begin by telling the board what your responsibilities are, what your title is, and for how long have you held that, uh, responsibility?
Okay, so, um, basically, I just direct the school, run the, you know, run the, the site, um, you know.
Ken, she's gonna have to speak up.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
They're gonna need a big, good voice.
Sorry about that, I'm not used to talking that loud, I'm not the teacher in the classroom.
That's a good voice, that was a real good voice.
We try to keep soft voices, speaking to little kids. Um, we, I, I'm basically director of, of, of the school, which, you know, is hiring the staff and being there all day to manage the operations going on.
How long have you been the director of the school?
Three years.
And that's the number of years that the school has been there?
Right.
So from the, from its inception? And the hours of the school day, your hours are not necessarily identical to some of the national schools, what are your hours, your school day hours?
Between nine and three.
So your, your program begins at nine and concludes at three? Do you have before-care and after-care programs?
So we do, we, we don't have before-care and after-care, we have, the, no, it's basically nine to three fifteen, nine to three-ish, you know, roughly. But the drop-off and the pickup is pretty staggered.
And is drop-off and pick-off around the nine o'clock and around the three o'clock, if you could explain how that works?
Yeah, so the school opens officially at nine, but the staff definitely, you know, comes before that, and then there's, um, and then we close up at, you know, we officially have dismissal at three fifteen, but it takes time for close-up too.
So the students are gone by three fifteen, your staff is there a little bit longer.
That's right.
Close up the school. And there was a question about other programs, um, would you make clear, no, no activities on the weekend?
Right.
And do you have evening activities at the school?
Generally not, it could happen maybe once or twice a year.
And how many employees do you currently have, and how many employees do you anticipate you would have if the expansion is approved?
All right, so right now, we have about, um, eighteen teachers and like three administrative staff on board. And for the expansion, we would probably need about fourteen new teachers.
Would your administrative personnel remain the same at three?
Yeah.
So you'd be going from eighteen teachers to thirty-two teachers.
That's right.
And are these teachers that are there, the duration of the day, nine to three, they're, they, they work full-time?
Yes.
Student population, what is the current student population of the school?
About one hundred forty children, maybe slightly less.
What are the ages?
So there, we start at newborns, and we, and, and it's till four-year-olds turning five, so.
Do you have kindergarten?
So, we call it kindergarten, they, they, they start at, they, they start, they come into the year of four years old.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not kindergarten per se.
So it's like free kid.
Right, right.
Got ya.
And Mr. Radasti didn't get to put on the right, there's seven new classrooms in the second floor, and at two teachers a classroom, that's the fourteen new teachers that you're projecting.
Right, right.
And so the student population's currently at one forty, what do you project that the capacity would be if the additional seven classrooms were added?
Probably about two hundred fifty.
We, we previously went over this and addressed the mayor's question, you have zero to six months, and six months to twelve months, and twelve to eighteen. If you could just kind of take us through how the students are broken down, what their age groups are on, when, when they're on the campus.
So for right now, we have a, a zero-to-six-month room, a tw- uh, a six-to-twelve-month room, a twelve-to-eighteen, eighteen-to-twenty-four, we have one two-year-old class, and we have three-year-olds in two classes, younger threes, older threes, and then we have two four-year-old classes.
And you would proportionately expand those with the seven new classrooms?
Right.
And if you could describe the security system that the school uses to keep the children, um, safe during the, the school day?
So the building's locked at all times, um, we have, you can only enter if you know the code, um, only our staff knows the code. Parents need to be buzzed in, even just so that we know that, you know, there's no, no one else coming in. Um, the secretary has a video camera, I have a video camera as well in my office, you know, so that in case there were, and anybody from outside coming to visit, we see them before they are allowed in the building.
Are the, are the cameras across the entire property?
Are they across?
Or just at the?
The parking lot.
Okay.
Then the playground area.
Okay.
So you're increasing the classroom sizes depending on the age of kids, which we don't know, you know, the kids are could be zero to, to twelve months, twelve months, twenty-four yards, too. So we're adding seven new classrooms total, but you're going from a hundred and forty to fifty.
Projected.
Projected.
Projected, that's the capacity, yes.
And.
At this point, we can't.
You can't gauge what's coming in, but, I, I understand that.
We're not necessarily, they're not necessarily all gonna be new families coming in and new vehicles coming in, because we can't, at this point, we can't capacitate full families.
Well, I see, I see your expecting, right?
Oh, what? Reserved.
How, how many, how many current classrooms are there?
How many?
Current classrooms on the first floor?
Sure.
How many current?
Classroom, yeah.
Now we have nine.
So did I hear correctly that you said that you can't currently accommodate full families of existing customers?
Right.
And you anticipate some of these new classrooms to provide space for your existing families that need additional childcare?
Right, that's right.
Thank you.
While we're on, on that, out of the, so you have a hundred forty children, how many families do you have signed up currently?
Your number of families?
Did you have a rough estimate?
I, I don't know for sure, but I think roughly around sixty families.
And drop-off and pick-up times the same for both, for all students, different age group?
Yeah.
One of the interesting things that we learned, if working with the school operator and with Mrs. Rabenowitz, is many of the teachers' children are also there for the day as students. If you could just talk about that.
Yeah, so a lot of, actually, it makes my job to finding employees easier, because a big perk of this is that they are able to come along with their children and not have to do drop-off in one place and work at another place, they, they're there for the day with their kids.
So a somewhat unique element of this is multiple children from families and the employees' children, so the, the, the demand on the parking lot is a little bit less than it would be in, in a facility that didn't have those, have those features.
It, for the pickup and the drop-off, um, let's say the proposed, the proposed, the way it's going to look, okay? We have projected twenty-five employees, sixty families, two hundred and fifty kids. Is it, is it proposed that they're going to park in parking spaces for pop, pick-up and drop-off, or is it going to be kind of a shuffle and?
The parents have to walk the kids in and pick the kids out, right? You can't just open the door and let them go, they have to physically walk the kid in the building, right?
They're not receiving them in the parking lot.
But, but, that, that's not my question. My question is, are the parents pick, parking in individual spaces and walking the kids there, or are they caravanning and back-to-back-to-back-to-back, shutting their vans off and walking them in, or their cars or their trucks or whatever?
Everybody parked and moves in.
Yeah.
We need to place that on the record.
Yeah.
If you could say, you require that they park?
Right, no, all cars have to get parked, cars get shut off, children get emptied.
Okay.
Out of the car to the building, teachers, the teacher welcomes the child, and then the parent leaves, gets back in the car.
Okay.
And.
Reverse.
So to, to my next question, you have twenty-five. So to my next question, you have twenty-five employees, sixty families, projected two hundred and fifty kids, is a total of sixty-six parking spaces gonna be able to handle that foot traffic?
Mrs. Rabbinowitz may have her own personal opinion, but Mr. Kennel is qualified-
Okay.
...to go through that, that's a recurring concern, and the parking demands for childcare have been studied intensely, so Scott's ready.
Okay.
And since you're there every day, what time is the, the trash and recycling typically picked up, during peak hours or?
I never paid attention to that.
Never paid attention, okay, I'm just curious, you know, because we had, before you came in, there was some concern about the cycle of the, the vehicles, the trucks.
If I may, if there's further questions of Mrs. Rabbinowitz, I don't want to stop them, but I do have a little bit more testimony from Mrs. Rabbinowitz.
What's the main drop off, the front of the building or the side of the building?
Where, where do the students commit?
In the front.
They're in the front now.
Handicap sponsor, pretty much right there?
Yes.
That's your main, right?
Yeah.
So it would be wise to tell your employees to park.
To park on the side of the building.
Yeah, nobody should park on the side.
Right.
Do you know the average amount of time a parent spends in the facility, like when they're dropping their child off or children off, they walk their child in, what is the average amount of time that they're physically in the building?
Pretty quick, it's, it's, it's efficient, it takes pretty quick, what is the average of-
Is it in the three to five minutes or the five to ten minutes, do you have an opinion?
I would say the three to five minute range.
I, I mean, I've been told in other daycare facilities that the average drop off time is six minutes, would that be fair to say, is, be consistent with what you experience?
I would think slightly less than that, but six minutes, you know, I guess some people are faster than others, but generally between three and five minutes.
Thank you.
There you do, you just hand the carrier and then you beat the-
Well, I'll just say, but I don't wanna hear, I-
Here you go.
Jen, I don't wanna hear any more nonsense with a half a kid or a half a car, I'm done with this, because we've done this six years, there's no such thing as a half a kid, there's no such thing as a half a car or a half a park system, for Mr. Pape, please!
Okay.
You and all the other traffic guys that come here and insult our intelligence by telling us it's a half a spot or a half a car or whatever, whatever nonsense, the flow's gonna be faster, the flow's gonna be slower.
This is not on you.
Yeah, it's not on you, it's not on you, I just, we've been doing this for a long time, we can tell already what's, what's gonna happen here, all right, the flow's gonna come in and it's gonna be-
It's a heavy road.
Yeah, it's a heavy road, and our concerns are, on the entrance side, are those, are the drop offs gonna lead out to Kent Road?
Because you got the elementary.
That's our concerns, it's all we're, you gotta understand what our concerns are, we are concerned that the drop off is gonna become an issue on Kent Road, on the wall, the side of the wall, that's the only direction coming.
One lane is the fifth key.
Yeah, it could be, it could be potentially a problem for a short period of time, but that's a busy, that interception is a major interception.
Because you got the school.
You got the school, you got the church on it, so you got the Route Nine traffic coming off, that Wawa, that's a major area, guys, and we need to take into consideration everything else surrounding it.
Noted.
If I may, we started talking about security, and Mrs. Rabbinowitz described the security camera system, and if you could also talk about the scheduled fire drills, the instruction that's given to the children, and the programs that you have to gather the children in the event that there is an emergency in the building, and how frequently that is, is passed on to the students and to the teachers, if you could just describe that program.
All right, so we do have a, once a month, we have a fire drill, there is a plan hanging in each classroom, and the teachers know it well, being that we do do it once a month as a review, it's actually a required, you know, according to our license, it's, it's a required thing, but we find it to be very helpful and very safe, it takes very quick, you know, and the classes are, they each have a classroom, they each have a door to the outdoors from their classroom, so they're able to get out quite quickly and quite safely.
And once they're outside, is there designated gathering spaces for them?
Yeah, yeah, so they each have a spot in the, yeah, so every class knows which part of the parking lot they're meant to gather in, and that's where they go and that's where they stay until it's time to come back in.
And this daycare facility is licensed by the state of New Jersey, earlier there was a question, so the licensing, you are fully licensed, you're required to have your recreation facility approved as part of that license?
Yes, yes, it is approved, and-
And if you could just briefly describe the outdoor recreation facility that are there, and the outdoor recreation that will be there for the expanded student population, you just describe that recreation area to the board.
All right, so it's, it's, you know, it's a nice playground, it has different recreational activities based on, you know, the ages that come out there, we generally have the children coming out from about eighteen months till, till, you know, till they graduate, which is about five, so, you know, there are different level equipment there to accommodate all those ages.
And all of that equipment and the layout is part of your licensing?
Yes.
Mr. Chair and Board Members, I have no further direct questions, but Mrs. Rabbinowitz is certainly available to answer any questions that you have about the operation.
Any questions?
I have a question, oh, you go first.
Sure.
Yeah, you go.
So I was, based on, I guess you have like fifteen and a half kids per class, based on the numbers, a hundred and forty divided by nine, right, I know John, it's like, about fifteen kids, can you just describe like the actual logistics of one of these like fire drills, let's say a class, like you, you break them down by age, right, so you have a class of like fifteen six-month-olds with two teachers, what does like a fire drill actually look like with two teachers evacuating fifteen six-month, because they're not walking on their own, right?
Sounds crazy, but it looks quite efficient.
Yeah, I'm very interested to like actually know the logistics of how you do that.
We do have more teachers in the, in the younger ages than we do with the older ages, so it's, it's not necessarily every class fifteen to two, the, the baby department has, has, has a little bit more staff than the older departments, and then the administrative staff comes and helps out in the baby rooms, we generally put, we have an evacuation crib for the babies, and we put four babies to an evacuation crib, and so that way you need one staff on four babies, and they wheel them out quite efficiently.
Gotcha.
It's easier to get them out than the four-year-olds sometimes.
Makes sense, how does that then additionally look like when they're on the second floor?
How does that look on the second floor?
They'll have to come up with a new fire plan.
Are you proposing the infant room upstairs?
Right, so I think that we would probably put the younger children downstairs and the older children upstairs, that makes more sense.
That is the way it's designed, other than-
Makes it more coming in for daily drop off and pickup also that way.
And then there's the two fire stairwells.
Yeah, I was just thinking like, I don't know if I've seen any preschools or daycares that are two stories, and maybe that's the reason, because if you actually had a fire, how do you evacuate?
I actually have, I directed a different preschool before this one with a two-story building, and they did, that's what they did, the babies on the lower level and the older children on the higher level.
Yeah.
We actually approved one, that's a zoning board, over on Oakland Road, two stories.
You can't have babies on the second floor.
No, they don't, but, but it's the same thing, is that if you have a two-story elementary school and there's a fire drill, they can't use the elevator, you have to-
No, right, but as long as they can walk, I guess that's my point, you can't-
So I would say, do you commit, if the board is acting affirmatively, that the, like the babies and the twelve to eighteen-month-old rooms would be on the first floor to ease the efficiency of a fire drill or an emergency evacuation?
Yes, I do, I, I think it would increase our efficiency in many ways anyway, so.
I think he said by design it was, correct?
Yes, he did.
I mean, it almost has to go to say that like you have to be able to walk up the stairs yourself, in a scenario where there's fifteen children and two teachers, you know, for seven classrooms upstairs and there's a fire, I mean, you're not getting them all out, carrying them, you know, rowing cribs, like-
They have to walk on their own two feet.
They have to be able to walk on their own to be on the second floor.
A hundred percent, but I would say that the other piece of this is that this proposal and layout all has to be reviewed and approved by the state, the state has very, very specific guidelines in terms of staff per, per child, so I think, you know, the baby room, it's like one staff member for four kids, and then as they get older, that ratio changes because you don't need as many hands on, but I would say the-
That also affect parking then, Jen, too, right?
No.
There's more, there's more emphasis, they need more staff, then, well, that don't affect the-
Well, I think that she's calculated that in to the staff that she's discussed, so twenty-five-
With the increase.
So, I mean, the thing too is that this is not like, it's not like public school, where every kid that wants to go here has a spot, like there's a finite amount of, of space in the facility, which is probably why, and I don't mean to put words in your mouth, but it's probably why they are unable to accommodate full families currently, because they've maxed out the occupancy of the rooms, because it's not just simply staffing that regulates it, it's the size of the rooms as well, the square footage based upon the age of the children, how many children are in the room, do there need to be bathrooms in the room, can there be bathrooms in the hallway, all those things are meticulously reviewed and screened and approved by the state, everything that they do has to comply with state guidelines, which I think is why Mr. Pape asked if this was a licensed facility.
And also, as, as the question was posed, Mr. Redasty asked if he could make a comment, there is an actual state regulation about who can be on the second floor, and I think it would be very valuable to share it with you, Steve is under oath, and Steve, if you could share that.
Sure, so the state requirements, they reference the International Building Code, and based on the use group, the children on the second floor have to be two and a half years old or older, that's, and then the drawings will be reviewed by the state, and they have to be approved by the state of New Jersey.
All right, so-
No babies on the second floor.
Yeah, let me, let me just interject here, before we start going down a path of questions, all right, so I, I've done a lot of license of childcare centers, probably a hundred in my career, the way childcare centers work, right, you're dealing with three different entities at the government level, you're dealing with the New Jersey Department of Health, you're dealing with the New Jersey DEP, and then you're dealing with the Department of Children and Families Office of Licensing, all right, so you have three different government entities in the state of New Jersey looking at every little detail that these childcare centers do, okay, every single thing, so before we start asking questions about, you know, the, the little things, just do realize you're gonna have three layers of government looking at these things that take their time, and, you know, you got, I think Mr. Pape got a kick out of this, like, they, it's precious cargo that they have in these buildings, right, so that it's a little more conservative on the way they do things, they take their time, you know, they've seen childcare centers, you know, the, the way this all started was a childcare center was built in a mercury, in a thermometer factory, before this was all licensed, right, and all the kids were getting sick and they didn't know why, this is before environmentalists and geologists and LSRP's like myself were involved, now there's strict regulations when they build childcare centers to, you know, make sure that they're not contaminated, or if they are contaminated, there's proper protocols and controls put in place so they can be built and be safe and, you know, protected, protection of human health and the environment, so it, it is all, I, I completely understand where you come from, Ken, I just wanted to put that on the record for you, because, you know-
I was gonna ask you also, I would love for you to help me out with the RAO.
Sure, so, yeah, I mean, I'll do it for you.
I'll set the question?
Sure.
We have an RAO for the property, it says the property is clean, it's a, it's a clean RAO, but it says that you have to get another RAO because we're making a change to the building, well, I know this LSRP named Mr. Huser, and I said, why do I have to do this? And I learned why you have to do it.
Yeah.
You have a perfect RAO, we have to do it all over again.
Yeah, so an RAO stands for Response Action Outcome, and when the LSRP program came into existence in 2012, it basically, the RAO takes the, the place of the historic no further action letter that was issued by the DEP, so for, the way child cares work are as new construction, existing construction, if it's existing construction, any alteration of the building, in this case, it's a significant one because there's an increase in size, but if you have a play area that's ten by ten, and now you're gonna have a play area by ten by twenty, you have to do the whole childcare center all over again, and it requires a new RAO, that RAO goes to the DEP, it goes to the responsible party, who in this case would be the childcare center owner-operator, it goes to Howell Township, it goes to Monmouth County, and it basically details that, you know, there are no issues with the expansion. Again, this was done because somebody expanded a play area onto a farmland that was loaded with pesticides, arsenic, and lead, you can imagine the lawyers got their hands on that one and was not a good, good thing, but, yeah, that is true, that it will be done, and Ken, it was nice enough, excuse me, to come to the Environmental Commission, excuse me, and share that they will be pursuing another RAO.
So I appreciate the opportunity to go through all that, that depth of that before the board, is there any further examination for?
The only thing I want to ask is the, two hundred and fifty-eight children listed, is that the max that you were giving, like, that's the limit you're allowed to have there, or is that your number, is that your proposed number, or is that the max you were given?
It's our projected number, but it'll, and, and it's the maximum that we're asking this board for.
Okay.
The state will give us the final number, but we're agreeing that that's, that's the cap.
Okay, thank you.
My question's really simple, that when you first come in, you mentioned that you will buzz parents in, I don't have children, nor have I been to a daycare, but I wanted to know that you mentioned that you buzz them in, or if not, the administration will have a keypad, I'm assuming it's not a keypad, it's an RFID reader, and on the floor plans, it shows doors going out from each classroom, does the admin have RFID readers to enter those, or is it solely just for leaving, doing fires?
So they do have, the, the code is, the teachers have the code to their classrooms also, it's actually a code, it's a keypad.
So all the doors on the side, they can all have access from when they park their car, walk through instead of going through the front?
Right.
And there's gonna be security cameras all along the perimeter showing who's coming in and out, what?
I have a-
You have to say yes.
Yes, yes, there will be.
A couple questions, nine to three, the general hours, modified hours on Friday, or is that-
Yeah, Friday is nine to one.
Summertime as well?
Summertime is nine to one, winter is nine to twelve-thirty.
And this is year-round, or you have modified programs for the summer months?
The summer months is included in the same schedule.
Same thing, no change of anything like that, front door entryway, you would just know because you're there, is it a vestibule or single-door entry?
So there's two, there's a double, if that's what-
Right, so parents would have to go in?
And then get let in again.
Then get let in, okay. Anything else? Laura, Jen, Mr. Pape?
So, take the time to do Scott Kennel tonight?
Well, he's already walking his way, so he's ready to go.
Mrs. Rabbinowitz, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So that Mrs. Rabbinowitz could go home, could you open it the public to Mrs. Rabbinowitz?
Sure, yeah, does anybody from the public have any questions for Mrs. Rabbinowitz about the operations of the childcare? Seeing none, good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Rabbinowitz, your excuse, thank you very much.
Scott, good evening, we will accept your credentials.
So do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to present to the board concerning this application shall be the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do, Scott Kennel, K-E-N-N-E-L, with McDonough and Ray Associates.
Mr. Kennel, there's some revisions that will be made to this plan with regard to trash and recycling, I'm not gonna ask for your testimony on that element of the plan because it'll be reworked, we'll need your testimony in that one, it is reworked, but I would ask if you could go through the circulation on site, the general circulation, and then the important questions about the adequacy of the parking, if you could take us through
Sure.
your experience, your knowledge, and also what published data is on that point?
Yes, well, as was discussed earlier, this, we're using the existing access system, which has the southerly access opposite Church Road as ingress only, and all traffic will exit out of the northerly driveway with the addition, just as it does today, we conducted parking counts as well as traffic counts in September of 2024, and basically, again, this daycare center has a more compressed timeframe, but still, traffic arrives and departs, so basically over a ninety-minute period for both the morning and afternoon, based on our observations, for example, during the morning peak hour, we had fifty trips during the peak hour entering the site, whereas over the ninety-minute period, it was approximately eighty vehicles. The parking that is proposed here, again, with the addition, seven additional classrooms, basically the enrollment or capacity increases by eighty percent, we have thirty-two parking spaces today, and we're adding thirty-four, so therefore, we're adding in excess of a hundred percent, even though the enrollment's only-
even though the enrollment's only increasing by 80%. And a lot of, and then there's a number of additional children that are part of existing families. So based on that consideration, it's my opinion that the 66 parking spaces will be adequate to support the daycare center. And again, they don't all arrive at a specific time. It's over a 90-minute period. So you have a turnover of parking spaces as parents drop off or pick up their children. My recommendation would also be that we have the parking spaces adjacent to the sidewalks, both on the west side and north side, dedicated to the parents, and have the staff park on more of the perimeter parking just so that they're closer to the sidewalk and less traffic, you know, pedestrian movement within the parking lot.
Did you take into consideration stack, the vehicles stacking up on the ingress area?
We observed that.
Yes, we observed that. And the parking supply proposed here allows for greater parking utilization to accommodate the additional demand as well as the existing. We're not, because of the fact that we have a parking aisle that goes in the easterly direction to bring them further into the site, there's obviously more parking spaces to accommodate the drop-off and pickup time. But as you stated, we are not looking to encourage any parking on Kent Road. There's too much traffic activity and.
We're not encouraging anything, but facts are going to be facts. We have daycares in Howell existing that go there and it's chaos in the morning. I understand, trying to get a kid out, it is what it is, okay? Cars parked in fire lanes, it is what it is, okay? And, you know, neighboring towns with daycares, same thing. Everyone parked in fire lanes, well, on-street work, like I said to you, it's just a tricky area. If it was a different area, it'd be more suitable for me to sit here and accept the fact that we're not going to have anybody out on the road. I know we can't prevent it.
Right, but also, in my opinion, based on the fact we're adding an additional parking aisle, parking spaces in the easterly direction, it provides a better distribution and to better accommodate those peak periods. No.
I mean, there is no parking on Kent Road.
Correct.
There's no shoulder.
Right.
During your observations in September last year, when you observed the parking lot and you observed the movements, did you ever see cars stacked up out onto Kent?
I have not observed that. But again, we have a compressed area, so there are people that are jockeying for position. And again, I just think with this plan, we have more parking available adjacent to the building to better accommodate those drop-off and pickup times. And also, just to mention too, is when we looked at the northerly exit driveway with the additional children, staff, and future traffic growth, we had level service B coming out of the exit driveway. So again, we have a good level of service at that point, so it's an efficient operation. I think the fact that the exiting driveway is separated from Church Road makes that work much more efficiently. Right.
Is the exit driveway one-turn only, or they can go either way?
They can go left or right out of there, correct. And they're predominantly making left turns out of there. I mean, it's basically a 90, 90% of the movements coming out of there are left turns. Because basically, to go make a right, you go to Wawa, and you're basically working your way to Route 9 to go back south again.
Well, that's going to cause, that's going to cause back up into the bar mile too, because making a left out of there.
That's a lot of cars coming down Kent Road, off of 9.
And we factor that in. I mean, again, the good thing here as well is because of dismissal is from 3:00 to 4:15, that's before the heavier loading with the commuter traffic typically occurs after 4:00. So that's another benefit with their operating hours, not being at the critical PM peak flows on Kent Road.
There's no other schools, well, at the PAL around the street, but that's.
But there's all, you know, that's school arrival dismissal time, where you have buses, parents, everyone else on the road to all the other schools in town. So seven EV spots, how many of those counted for?
What do you mean?
With the EV spots, how many credits?
You get seven and two for, I think it's like.
Yeah, two for one.
So it's about 14 spots out of that total spots?
Well, we have 66 paved parking spaces. So there's 66 parking spaces onsite.
Physically, there's 66.
So where we have 32 today, we're adding 34 additional. So we're more than 100% greater than what.
Including the EV?
EVs on top of it.
Okay.
But 25 employees?
So there's 66 physical parking spaces.
Not including the EVs, because?
No, 66 total.
Without the credit, correct.
32 employees. No, there's 66 total spaces available, that's it. And that would be, seven of those 66 are the EV spaces?
That's correct.
And if there's no families that drive EVs, you could throw those out the window then, because?
But they're not restricted.
I, there are number, I mean, observed number, I think there's adequate number of EV vehicles that are kind of accommodate with the seven spaces.
Because I'm not down there too often at these arrival dismissal times, but within the last couple of weeks, I happen to be. And I did see probably about somewhere in the 10 to 15 range backed up onto Kent Road, awaiting to turn into that lot. Has that been something that you noticed during any of your studies?
I haven't observed that, and one of my staff counted, they didn't observe that as well. But now you're saying turning right?
Later in the day, so it could have been maybe a Friday dismissal when it was earlier, because it's 3:00, I'm typically not around there, I'm getting my own kids. So it could have been a Friday dismissal earlier on, where sizable amount of cars were backed up, waiting to turn in.
Inside the parking lot?
Outside, on Kent Road, lined up, waiting to turn in.
Into that, that facility.
I mean, can I make a suggestion, since we're not going to finish this evening? Perhaps, Mr. Kennel, you can have your staff go back out there specifically, you know, I don't know if 9:00 is the peak hour on the road, but specifically at like, start time and 3:00 PM to really assess the stacking and, you know, what the issue is with the driveway? You know, in a couple of days of the week, just to give the board a little comfort that, you know.
Well, whatever numbered is just dope, so whatever it is.
I get that, but there's also, and he also testified, guys, that now they can pull farther into the lot, so you don't need to get a space right up front, and that might alleviate that situation, correct?
Correct, and I'll also look at the Friday dismissal period, since it's earlier in the afternoon.
Yeah, I just think if, let him go out, take a look, and report back specifically on what's going on there now, just so that we could have a good handle on it. I just want to impress upon the board, this is a permitted use at this location. So there's limits to what we can do regarding off-site traffic. So, you know, the use is permitted in the zone. You know, we're really getting a little far field with some of the questions. So, you know, this is not a use variance, it's not before the zoning board. They don't have to prove no negative impact. I understand we're trying to make sure that there's a safe scenario here, but it is permitted. So like, our hands are a little tied in terms of how far we can go with this.
Either way, just not knowing how the operations work there, as I was driving by, I thought it was like a drop-and-go kind of lane, where why else would those cars be all backed up? But the fact that they need to be in parking spaces, are they just waiting for spaces to empty out so they could get in there? And that could be a while with that three-to-five-minute, average of six-minute per car.
I would take some pictures too, Scott.
Okay, will do.
Scott, do you?
Phasing's concerned, they need to do the parking lot before they do the addition.
Do, in your traffic studies, do you use any type of like Wi-Fi cameras or anything like that to see like live?
Some of them we do. We do have a vendor we use to have videotapes the intersection.
Okay. I didn't know if that was just common practice, or is, you know.
Increasing.
Yeah, it's a case-by-case situation.
Okay, okay.
With, and I, with permission, and if it's appropriate, I think that this is an excellent place for us to say, we got good guidance from the board, good questions and direction from the board, certainly from Laura Newman and Jennifer Beam, good guidance from them with specifically what they're looking for. I know that the client wants to be back as quickly as possible.
Okay.
And engineer is going to tell me what kind of a.
Eileen, how are we looking on schedule for November and December?
Four weeks enough for you?
Can you get back there?
Four weeks to get your plans back in.
November 6th, I have two applications on.
We won't be ready for November.
Yeah, it's probably the last in November.
It wants us to be ready, but we won't be ready, that's not fair, that's.
December 4th, I have one, and December 18th, I have one.
December 4th, work for everybody? Scott?
Yes, December 4th.
December 4th it is.
As you can see, our court reporter transcribed the hearing. We'll get the transcript to the board. We'll also work from the transcript to identify the issues that were brought to our attention. And we'll work with your staff to see if we can come up with some solutions. We know that there's a 10-day rule, so that would be 10 days before December 4th we have to be filed. We'll be certain that we don't, I don't want everybody working over Thanksgiving. We'll make sure that we get it 15 days before the December 4th. And I'd ask if you could announce for that date and carry us without further notice.
We're going December 4th. Could you make an announcement for this application? I'll do it. So this application is being carried, well, not carried, but it's being continued on December 4th, 2025, here in this meeting room at 7:00 PM. This is case number SP1135, Star Cap Holdings LLC. Do we need?
We need an extension of time as well.
So on the record, the extension is granted to the end of the year.
Okay.
And I'll follow it with a letter to Eileen tomorrow.
Thank you, Ken, thank you, Scott.
Thank you. Appreciate the procedure.
Have a good evening, have a good weekend. Okay, and the final matter this evening, it's the area in need of redevelopment hearing, which is a public hearing to consider the properties along Route 9, northbound and southbound from Lanes Mill Road to the Lakewood Township border. Jennifer?
Yeah.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to present to the board concerning this area in need of redevelopment study shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, guys, I know it's getting late, but the mayor and council have approved the resolution asking this board to evaluate the Route 9 corridor, both in the north and southbound direction from Lanes Mill south to the Lakewood border. I want to comment a couple of things before I start. Number one, this is a non-condemnation designation. That's stated right up front. There's zero ability for the township to use any kind of condemnation or eminent domain as part of this redevelopment study. Secondly, I also want to state for the record that the redevelopment plan, should the board find that the area meets the criteria, is going to be an overlay. It is not going to be superseding, meaning all the underlying zoning that is there, primarily HD1S, because that was just recently changed based on our last master plan, would remain. And then an additional opportunity for some other types of uses that are not currently allowed in the HD1S would be part of that redevelopment plan. There is no intention to limit people's utilization of the property. The entire intention of this study is to add and provide additional opportunities for those properties along the Route 9 corridor to redevelop. There's no mandatory requirement for a resident or a business owner to do anything. They can stay exactly as they are right now, but this is just adding an additional layer of opportunity that a property owner can take advantage of to potentially redevelop their property in the future. We've looked at the corridor. There are quite a number of parcels that run, as you can imagine, from Lanes Mill to the Lakewood border, all of which are enumerated within the document in both block and lot form plus map form. We have pretty much mapping or photographs of all the properties and an analysis of which criteria they would qualify as. When you're designating an area in need of redevelopment pursuant to the local housing and redevelopment law, it's different from the MLUL that we typically base our land use decisions on here. And there are a number of criteria that are identified on pages two and three of the report, which range from A to H. When you're reviewing an area in need of redevelopment, not every single specific property needs to meet the criteria independently. You look at the corridor as a whole, and even if one particular site is in perfect shape, like I think there's a brand-new office building that's going on just south of Ford Road. Obviously, it's, you know, this is a development that got approved at the zoning board. It's under construction, it's brand-new, it's a beautiful building. But in the overall corridor and the redevelopment opportunity for the corridor, it falls between like where the old Pizza Hut was and then other property on the other side of it that could use a little TLC. So this is not a statement on any, the quality of anybody's property. It's just a, this is like the legal piece of the process to designate the areas in need of redevelopment so that a redevelopment plan can be adopted moving forward. What we found is that not every property meets the same criteria. There are a number of criteria that the corridor itself meets, and I'm going to refer to them as B, C, D, and H. B is basically the discontinuance of the use of the buildings previously used for commercial, manufacturing, or industrial. C is land that's owned by the town, the county, housing authority, or unimproved. D is buildings that, I don't want to use the word blighted because that's kind of, we don't use that term anymore, but they're a little older and could use a little spiffing up. And then the last is H, which is smart growth. I do want to say, which is the next step of this process, that, you know, the goal and the intention is to allow for some more mixed-use development, which is similar to what the mayor and council adopted, the last meeting, Ian? Was it the last meeting? For the Route 9 south corridor from basically Freehold to West Farms Road, which is allowing the underlying zoning to remain with some mixed use and some other types of uses that, you know, were not initially within the existing zoning. With all that being said, I would submit to the board that it is my professional opinion that the corridor, both the north and southbound side on the southern portion of the township, do meet the criteria to be designated in need of redevelopment. And I would respectfully request that the board act in the affirmative.
Any questions, gentlemen? Okay, well, I do see that we have some members of the public here. Do you have any questions regarding the presentation? If so, you can come on up. Yeah, come on up. Microphone should be on. If you could just state your name and your address, please.
My name's Kimberly Young, and I own the property on, it's actually Lot and Blocks.
Okay.
Near the church and Alexander by the U-turn.
Okay.
Ben right there. So I had a vision many, many years ago that God had given me to help the community with this property. There's 32 acres there. I've been up and down a lot with the town with like tax issues and farmland. I do a lot for charities. I do a lot to help kids with drug addictions and stuff. And I work with big community stuff. So my question was, like my vision back in 2004 when I bought this property was to help people, you know, to God. And the church happens to be right next door. They were working on trying to grow the church. And I was, my vision was to help the community, where we can bring more kids to that area, you know, and do things and develop over there for the kids, you know? And give them hope and give them dreams, you know? So my question is like basically, like, doing something like that? Because I know there was a part of all of Route 9 where they were going to put it towards the county, where they were going to open parks and stuff like that. Like, is that an opportunity where we can do something on that way?
I mean, so that's the next step. This is the first designation step. So the next step would be the preparation of actually the plan, which has the uses and the types of things. I think we're open to hearing if you have specific ideas that you think would be appropriate. Every piece of property along the corridor doesn't wind up having to have the same zoning, for lack of a better word. So if that piece that you own, which is adjacent to the church, lends itself to something else, this is an opportunity to have that included in the plan.
Yeah.
That's probably not going to come to fruition, in all honesty, until some point next year. But this is the first step in enabling that to happen. So before you leave, I can give you my information, and you could let me know what you're thinking. And then we can see if we can make it work and incorporate it into the plan when it gets prepared.
Yeah, that'll be great, that'll be great.
Ms. Young, any of your property have Route 9 footage?
Yeah. All of it, as you referred, I have three lots, so it sits on. All of it is Route, I have three lots, so it sits on Route 9 right by the church and right by the U-turn, and then I own behind, so the front parcel is, they say it's like more for commercial, and then there's residential. And my dream was to do something where I can maybe help kids that are going through scars or problems, because we all have scars.
Are you on the, the southbound side or the northbound side?
On the southbound.
Okay, okay, that's, but you're sort of, you're across from the church.
Yeah, like the church is here, and that's all my property.
Got it, okay.
Right there.
Yeah, so I would suggest, because that's kind of, this, this is kind of the next steps in the process, that I can give you my information, and then reach out, and then we can talk about how, how to best lay it out, and then, you know, it's definitely something that we can incorporate into the plan as we prepare it in the future.
Yeah, I was thinking, you know, maybe, I don't know if we can use it for like activities for kids to go to, you know, there's so many different places where kids are going through outlets, there's so many drug addictions, there's so many problems, and for 33 years I've been working with these kids, helping them with scars, helping them with pain, so they have places that they can go to. I mean, I haven't really come up with the exact plan, but...
I mean, we could, we could definitely work that out, but that's definitely the next step.
Yeah, get, get Jen's information before you leave this evening. Thank you for sticking around.
Thank you.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Like basketball courts.
Um, anybody else this evening? I know a lot of, you, you guys have been sticking around for two-plus hours, yeah, coming up, sir.
There's two of them.
Oh, I, I said sir at the same time, there's two people. Good evening, if you could just state your name and your address, please?
Jerry Eichels, and 18 Pepperidge Road.
Oh, Jerry, how are you today?
Good.
What can we do you for?
The Yodder School, now you're gonna have to stick with me, because I have a lot of, I've had reconstruction on my face.
No, it's okay.
So, I raised my, I, I've, my parents, I lived, I lived at the Angle Inn before, before Candlewood, and my family was the first family to close on a house in Candlewood.
Wow.
So I've lived here my whole life. Now, I raised my three boys, I, I raised my three boys here. Now, I'm, I quit my job in 2020 to keep my son and his daughter going, I take care of their kids, and I've dealt a lot with, let's put drop-off, pickup stuff, okay? And, you know, they say, well, you know, on this, on this Yodder School...
I think we're, yeah...
Yeah, so this is not that, that's over for tonight.
I think it's just...
No.
No, but you can come back the next time.
December, you can come back in December when the public will have an opportunity to speak.
Yeah, please do, yeah, please come back in December.
All right.
Yeah, could we, I didn't open it up to the public today, because they, they haven't finished, but December 4th, please come back.
Yeah, this is for the redevelopment.
Yeah.
Down.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it. Anybody else for the redevelopment? You okay, sir?
Yes.
Okay. All right, seeing none, I will close the public portion, any...
So I would just respectfully request that the, the board act in the affirmative and approve the area as being in need of redevelopment, so we can send this back to the governing body for endorsement and move forward with the redevelopment plan.
Okay. All right, oh, yes, sir.
Is there a way I could submit something in writing, is that something in writing? My wife is going in for some major surgery.
Uh, I guess we could submit it to Eileen, is that, how...
Yes, in the, in the planning office.
Okay, all right, I'll drop something off there.
Yep, okay, you're welcome. Okay, at this time, I will entertain a motion that we, is it an official adoption?
Yes.
Of the area in need of redevelopment?
Correct.
Motion.
Mr. Beto with the motion, do I have a second?
Second up.
Mr. McNicholas?
Yes.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Beto?
Yes.
Mr. Carbonick?
Yes.
Mr. McNicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Councilman Adell?
Yes.
Mayor Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Friedman?
Yes.
Mr. Wetco?
Yes.
And Chairman Hudson?
Yes.
Approved.
Thank you, Jennifer, thank you, Eileen. Master plan update?
So, we are currently in mediation with the Affordable Housing Dispute Resolution Program. We're in really good shape, but we are gonna have to amend our housing plan, that probably won't happen until the beginning of next year, but if we can get settled and get, you know, it's gonna be minor changes, but if we can get settled in advance of next year, you know, it might, it might show up in December, I just don't know yet, because things are not moving very quickly.
Okay, okay. No reason for executive session, Laura looks like she's ready to go play in the snow. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, everybody, good evening.